Well, good morning. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, divided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, there are meeting documents available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. It's just a reminder to silence your cellphone, which mine is, thank goodness. And Craig is here if you need a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from February 4th, 2020.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $897,406.81.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bar.
It does include $191,000 going to Metro Communications from pass-through monies.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, I just give recommendation to review the reports there. It's a report from the Minnehaha County Sheriff for January 2020 and an update on the Minnehaha County highway reports, so. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is abatements recommended for approval. I'm not sure if there's anyone here today that's going to be able to speak. Oh, you are, thank you, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I appreciate you coming down.
First time representing, so. Nicole Steiger, Equalization Office. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, it looks like we have a number of abatements. If you just want to, I think they're all generally related to the same item. If you could just give a little background.
Yes, so we have four different parcels that we're recommending approval for on abatements, all for the same reason. So, the South Dakota DOT purchased all three, or all four parcels on July 18th of 2018, and there was an error in the system when processing those sales, so the transfer did not occur. So, it stayed in the other individuals' names, so we have corrected that issue. And now we are just going back and running through the abatements because the South Dakota DOT should have been exempt. So, we're submitting for abatement for the 2019 taxes paid 2020, and then also five months of the 2018 taxes paid 2019, just for when the South Dakota DOT should have had ownership of those properties.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm just wondering, there's eight, I believe, not four?
It's four parcels, but just 1819 and 1920 on each parcel.
And then do we need to read them for the record, Olivia?
I would suggest it.
I can go ahead and do that. I'll just check to make sure if there are any other questions on this this morning. Okay, so what we are looking for is, I think we can do it, is one motion for the abatements for approval for SD, DOT, RDID 15128, 2018 property taxes, in the amount of $248.41. SD, DOT, RDID 15128 for the 2019 property taxes, in the amount of $737.62. SD, DOT, RDID 15129, 2018 property taxes, in the amount of $128.84. SD, DOT, RDID 15129, 2019 property taxes, in the amount of $382.58. SD, DOT, RDID 15130, 2018 property taxes, in the amount of $131.04. SD, DOT, RDID 15130, 2019 property taxes, in the amount of $389.10. SD, DOT, RDID 15137, 2018 property taxes, in the amount of $701.47. And finally, SD, DOT, RDID 15137, 2019 property taxes, in the amount of $1,077.56.
Make a motion to approve items A through H.
Second.
Motion in the second. Roll call vote, please.
Vanega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, that takes us to item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. And item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So, this is the opportunity for public comment. If there are people here for a public comment, this is your opportunity. I think we have a couple people this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office, and I wanted to present to you, this body and the public, a little bit of information on the upcoming elections. We have one for sure city council election that's blended with a school election, and that will be on Tuesday, April 14th. And then the last day of the voter registration cutoff will be 5:00 PM on March 30th. And then there's also, if nobody gets a majority on that election, there's a possible runoff that would be on May 5th, and the last day for voter registration would be April 20th at 5:00, 5:00 PM. Then comes the county's election. The primary election will be held June 2nd, and so the voter registration cutoff for that election is going to be May 18th. And then, of course, the big general election will be November 3rd, which means October 19th at 5:00 PM will be the end of voter registration for that particular election. I also had a question posed to me about felon voters in the state of South Dakota. And I would like to, I'm proud to say that the state of South Dakota has been ahead of this thing for a long time. And I know it gets controversial, some people don't want felons to vote at all, but South Dakota is a state that, once you complete your sentence, and your sentence also, completing that means paying any fines you might have or probation that you might have after you are incarcerated, once you get out. When I first got here, it was kind of a mixed up thing, and we had to do a lot of chasing down, but since we've gone to the total vote, where it's essentially a local, central uploaded voter registration thing out of the state, it's been a lot easier for the USJS to keep track of all this here. So, when we do a voter registration, we find out somebody, if somebody says something about, "I'm a voter, I don't know if I'm registered or not," what we do is, we will upload that paperwork, and if they've got some sort of documentation, we also attach that to it. We scan it and upload that. But the USJS has been very good in the last sense, we've got total vote about informing us if somebody is a felon and they've completed all their stuff, and that is one of the checks that they do overnight when we upload a voter registration. A couple of the other ones would be a death match, a citizen, you know, make sure you're a citizen, the felon, there's a couple of other things that get kind of tricky. But I think that South Dakota has long been ahead of everybody because we keep the safeguards in place about if you don't want a felon voting, that safeguard is in place, and then when their sentence is over, getting that, getting that removed so they can, they can register to vote. Now, that said, the legislature is in session, so no man's life, liberty, or property is safe, but I don't see any bills on there this year to change that, so. Are there any questions I could answer?
Commissioner Barth.
Bob, if you're 17, can you register to vote if you'll be 18 by the election day?
You can, by, in six months from the date where you register that you will turn 18, then you can register, and we will put you in a queue. And you can even do it up to a year ahead of that, we'll put you in a queue, and when that pops up, we drop it in, get you registered. That's the way it works.
Can you sign a nominating petition?
Once you're registered, you can, yes. Once that, once you're effectively registered.
Other questions? It's great information, thank you for being this morning.
Thanks for allowing me to do that.
Anyone else for public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Crystal Johnson with the State's Attorney's Office. Just wanted to bring you an update on some of the things we've been doing in our office. It's another busy week, we have four jury trials going on today and tomorrow. But last week, we actually did a training, a gang, juvenile gang in identification investigation training that we were able to put on. Our juvenile division got the undersheriff from Ramsey County to come in and provide a free training to local teachers, LSS workers, social workers on Thursday and Friday. On Thursday, they had 51 school, not school resource officers, but school workers from the social workers in the school, LSS workers, principals, to work on gang identification and what they can do in the schools to help stop it. And then on Friday, we were able to offer a training for school resource officers. We had 31 school resource officers from the area, from Brookings, Vermillion, I think they came from Yankton, Brandon, and then, of course, Sioux Falls, that we were able to bring in and talk about the suppression of gangs, as well as some of the more recent ways to identify gang members, especially using social media. Our juvenile division and Cody Raderman were able to get this training for free of charge, so we were able to provide it to our agencies free of charge. I think it ended up costing us about $100 in water, coffee, and some bagels. So, one of our problems that we face is juvenile crime. One of the driving forces of that is gang-related activity, and so identifying it and trying to prevent it is a great resource, and just wanted to let you know that we're working on trying to put people on the front end to be able to identify a lot of those traits and characteristics. So, it was a good thing, and we were able to provide it really, really quite cheaply. So, any questions?
Any questions, comments? I'd just say that Police Chief Matt Burns was, spoke to Downtown Rotary yesterday and talked about just the importance of school resource officers and people who have relationships with students to be able to bring forward information that's been really helpful in addressing some of these gang-related issues, and so I just really commend you and your office for bringing that training in to train those people who really have the ability to build relationships with kids and try to...
Absolutely, and those school resource officers are a lot of times the face that those kids see that isn't necessarily the big bad police officer that they might be intimidated by, but the person they see in their hallway is the person that they have common and everyday interaction with, and so those school resource officers are invaluable to our juveniles and to our kids in this community.
All right, oh, Commissioner Heiburger.
Thank you to the State's Attorney's Office for doing that, because a lot of times the State's Attorney's Office is looked at as prosecutor, because that's what you are, but they're also trying to help on the front end before those kids are in trouble, and try to keep them out of being prosecuted safely, so.
Absolutely, it saves us work on the back end, so, absolutely. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, anyone else for public comment this morning? All right, so that takes us to regular business. The first item is the presentation of the Purple Heart road signs to Minnehaha County. Ken Tunison, good morning.
Good morning. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here. The mission of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill and camaraderie among the combat wounded veterans, promote patriotism, support necessary legislative initiatives, and most importantly, provide service to all veterans and their families. Our members are combat wounded veterans who are dedicated to our country and our veteran community. We endeavor to do better for each other and by others always. Chartered by Congress for Combat Wounded Veterans, the Purple Heart is composed of military men and women who received the Purple Heart, awarded the Purple Heart Medal for wounds suffered in combat by an act of international terrorism. Although our membership is restricted to combat wounded, we support all veterans and their families with a myriad of nationwide programs by chapters, regions, and the national officers. Our members have answered our country's call. Now, as combat wounded veterans, we proudly continue to serve our country by helping America's active-duty veterans or families and those who have borne the burden of battle. And I take this time this morning to thank you for the proclamation to proclaim Minnehaha County a Purple Heart County. Secondly, I passed out a new handout from the Department of Transportation, South Dakota Department of Transportation, that once the Minnehaha County Transportation Department notifies the South Dakota Department of Transportation, they will install the signs on the county line on a state highway. Prior to this, back in May, the Cheyenne River Tribe Reservation put up signs, and the DOT started taking them down because there's not in the quote-unquote, Purple Heart is not, was not eligible to be in the state right-of-way. So, we have that law changed now, and the state highway department will put those signs up in the state right-of-way. So, if you have a state highway like 115 or 42, you can, they will put them up at the county line with their hardware, so it's not costing the county anything. You all, you will get four of them signs, one for the east traffic coming in from the east, one from the west, one from the north, and one from the south. So, you'll be presented four of them. Along with that, you will get two, two each of these signs that you can put around the courthouse or at the highway department, wherever the county should so desire. And if we have a minute, we'd like to have a picture taken so that what the county commissioners will assign, and then I can send that to the Purple Heart organization, and they'll post that on the, on the website.
Okay. Did you want to do that right now, or did you want to wait until after the meeting was over?
Quicker the better, or if you want to wait until after the meeting?
I think we could do it quickly now, all right.
Yeah, do you want to come back here by the flag? Here, I'll hold this.
It's like he's going to let us all hold something. Wow, these have been in your cars, they're nice and cold.
Yep. I've got one more if you want. Oh, yeah.
Are you going to be in the picture with us?
Yep.
Yes.
It's Commissioner.
No, no, you're a veteran, come on.
Run it, Bob.
Can't just say, you know, Bob's, Bob's wife is not a warrior.
Locker?
You want Bob on this side? Bob, can you come over here?
Yeah, Bob. Bob, yes. That flag's right in the center there. Oh, yeah. Let's, Bob, can you move those papers there? Perfect. Yeah, now this all got granite walls and clay. Eyes, all right. Here we go, just see a few of those. Where's the red carpet? Get a little closer.
My blaster doesn't pay.
Dark. I hope my face can return to normal.
We're stuck like this.
One of my batteries.
Craig, your cellphone, which should take a picture.
No? It just seemed kind of dark.
He's kind enough to email the pictures.
Okay, he was having camera trouble, that's why I said that.
Yeah.
The flash is going off.
Yeah, the flash is going off.
Frank, take a quick shot, just in case.
It'll probably light on the computer, I can lighten it up too. One, two, three. All right, we got four or five pictures.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. It's an honor for us.
We want to catch you.
I'm going to turn to come in.
All night. Yeah. Thank you, all right.
I'll take that. You guys, thank you.
Well, thank you again. Thanks to the viewing public for hanging with us there while we took a picture, and I just wanted to thank Ken again for bringing forward these issues and for your service, so.
Very well.
I'd note that Bob Litz is a veteran, and Maggie Gillespie here mentioned this morning that her dad is a Purple Heart recipient, so we have a lot to be thankful for, the folks that have served and been combat wounded. All right, so that takes us to the next item, which is a presentation on Children's Inn. We're happy to have Amy Carter here, good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to give him his notes back here, quick. Amy Carter with Children's Inn, and I had sent two different documents. There's one that looks like this, that you have, and if you need additional copies, that's just a stat sheet that we put together for 2019, that's kind of a nice summary of the work that we've done at Children's Inn. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here again. I know many of you are very familiar with Children's Inn, so I won't go into great detail, but I also wanted to make sure I introduced Michelle Lavalli. She is our new CEO at Children's Home Society, and she's with me here today. She started with us this past fall, so it's great to have her onboard. So, as I said, Children's Inn, we have been here many times before, and you're a great supporter of our work, and so today I'm just going to kind of breeze through some information about 2019 and talk about kind of where we're headed this coming year. This is our slide here that talks about our shelter intakes. So, what I just want to point out here is, you can see there's a nice trend up there. So, we actually saw almost a 17% increase in the number of intakes into our shelters. So, as a shelter, we primarily house women and children who are fleeing domestic violence. We also are a licensed group home for children who have been removed from their home, and then we also do shelter men. Currently, a man would be considered in the intakes, he just wouldn't stay at our shelter, we would house him at a, at a hotel typically. So, but that gets included in our shelter intake numbers, and we have seen an uptick in the number of males that we're serving as well. So, the other thing I'd point out is that we saw a 25% increase in the number of children who are fleeing abuse, are coming to us with their mom, who is fleeing domestic violence. So, overall, a significant increase in the number of women and children that we are serving at Children's Inn this past year. I wanted to focus a little bit on our capacity, because this kind of talks about where we're headed in the future as well. So, currently, we are a 40-bed shelter, and 79% of the time last year, we were at or above our capacity of 40 individuals. To break that down, we have 12 beds that are designated for children in our licensed group home, so those 12 beds cannot be used for our domestic violence victims. So, that leaves basically 28 beds for women and children who are fleeing domestic violence. And the number I want to really point out there is that 93% of the time, our 28 beds were full or above capacity. So, although we averaged 47 individuals a day, we have days when we have 50, 60, 70 people with us in shelter. So, I share that with you because I want people to understand the commitment that we've made to victims of domestic violence and child abuse, and we, we overextend our own resources in order to make sure we don't have to turn people away. And we will continue to do that as long as we are able, and we, we just know the importance of having that safe shelter for victims in that time of need. So, for that reason, we're operating above capacity about 93% of the time. And then oftentimes, people think of us just as a shelter, and within our shelter, we're doing so much more as well. Basic needs are met, of course, how, the roof over their head, food, clothing, things like that, but we're also providing counseling and support groups and parenting support, and really anything we can do to surround those victims and provide them the support that they need while they're with us in order to help them be successful that when they transition out of our shelter. Obviously, the goal would be to not have to have a shelter for victims of domestic violence, so while we're, while we have them with us, we work very hard on helping to prevent further incidences. And a lot of that comes through our crisis intervention as well. So, we are 24/7. We know crisis does not stop at 5:00 or on the weekends or holidays, so we, again, are committed to being available at any time of day or night, not only to victims, but to law enforcement, to medical personnel, as they're doing their work with, with victims of domestic violence as well. And so, because of that, we saw an increase of almost 1,000, or over 1,000 more crisis intervention contacts. And I, it might not seem like a big number, that is huge. That is, that is, the crisis is so unpredictable that, you know, we can have three crisis situations a day, or we can have three going on at one time. So, this number really is, is very significant in addition to our intakes into shelter and how much work is going on behind, behind the doors at Children's Inn. What this averages out to is about 16 crisis interventions or responses a day, and those can be phone calls to people coming to our door, to law enforcement requesting assistance, just a wide variety that, that goes into that crisis intervention. So, that just gives you a little picture of last year at Children's Inn, and the other handout that you have gives you a lot more detail on some other numbers if you're interested. So, I wanted to just highlight who we serve at Children's Inn, about 80, 83% are from Minnehaha County this past year, and you can see where the other individuals are coming from. So, we primarily serve Minnehaha, Lincoln, Turner, Union, and McCook Counties, but we certainly will not turn people away if they have a safety need, if they're from other cities or counties or even states, but that's a, a smaller percentage. And then I also just put on there how many incidences our Sioux Falls PD and the county sheriff responded to, and I didn't have 2019 stats yet, but for 2018, they responded over 1,900 incidences of domestic violence, stalking, protection order violations, and I think that's very telling because that directly impacts our work as well. If law enforcement is busy in having situations related to domestic violence and protection orders, those are trickling down to us as we try to serve the victims and work with law enforcement very closely. So, that's a great partnership that we've had for many, many years, and it really is critical to, to kind of working within this issue of domestic violence. So, all of this definitely shows we have a need, and we have a lot of victims of domestic violence that we're serving in our communities, and because of that, we at Children's Inn knew we needed to do more. We, in order to continue to serve victims, we're going to have to expand our services. And so, we started by looking at what would make sense for a community our size, how many beds should we have? Because, as I shared, we're obviously working above capacity the majority of the time, so what do, what would make sense? So, we did some research and determined in other communities, there's a population, if, at 100,000 population, for example, in Portland, they have 11 beds for women and children. In a city like Minneapolis, they have 17 beds for women and children. So, if we took that information and we looked at, excuse me, Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, per 100,000, if we went with 17 beds, Children's Inn would have needed 48 beds last year. And if you recall, I, we have 28 beds, so we're already quite behind on the number of beds we should have for a community our size. And then when you look at moving forward, we have an average growth in Sioux Falls, about 2.2%, and so you base, you look at that, and where, what we're at for population, we would need a minimum of 54 beds for domestic violence victims in 2025. And as I mentioned earlier, we're already seeing 47, 50, 55, 60 people, so I don't think having permanent 54 beds is unrealistic at all, and that is where we're, we're working to achieve that and actually exceed that with some plans that we have at Children's Inn, so. But I just wanted to share that with you so that people in our community know that, that the need is there, we see that already, and we, we aren't able to meet that need with the number of beds we currently have. So, this all leads into an amazing gift that we got at Children's Inn last year from T. Denny Sanford. Because of the, our reputation and the work that we've been doing for over 43 years at Children's Inn and Children's Home Society, Mr. Sanford recognized that we have a need, and there are vulnerable and at-risk adults and our, and children in our community, and he wanted to, to support that and support our work. So, we received a donation of $11 million that is restricted for land, building, and equipment needs in order to expand our space for Children's Inn. So, we are, we were amazed by this gift, and we're really excited, and we look forward to what it'll be able to do, not only for Children's Inn and Children's Home, but our community in general and those that we're serving. But I do want to point out that this gift does not include any increased operating costs, and we have anticipated that with an additional space and the services we'll be providing, that we're looking at about a $1.4 million increase in our operating expenses, and that would, our hope is to be able to start operating out of our new building in 2023. So, we, we looked at that moving forward in 2023. So, with that, just a little update on where we're at with our building plans. We are currently in the planning stages, so we are looking at trying to locate land and secure that land, as well as working with our architect to, with the, for the concept design, and determining how many beds, bedrooms, you know, what, what we need in order to, to meet the needs now, but also moving into the future so that we, we don't have to do this again anytime soon. We want to, we want to build so that it makes sense moving forward. A big part of that planning is also the fundraising strategy, so we are also developing what that will look like and how we will work to begin raising those additional operating costs. how we will work to begin raising those additional operating costs. And I really, I think, I have to mention that when we received this gift from Mr. Sanford, he really intended it for it to be a leadership gift. His goal was to encourage others to support the work of Children's Home and Children's Inn, to come alongside and recognize, again, that there's this need, and there's our community, people in our community who are suffering, and we all need to walk alongside and help them. And part of that would be helping to support the work of Children's Inn. I put in here a quote that I just think kind of, I could, there's lots of quotes I could put in, but I really, this is from a woman who stayed with us not too long ago, and it just helps to sum up why the work that we do, and why your support of our work is so critical. So, a woman who stayed with us said, "I can't explain in mere words what all Children's Inn has given me. I can't thank you enough. When I came here, I could have crawled under a doorway. Now, I walk through, and with hopes and solutions that will help keep me growing. Thank you." We, we see people at their lowest. They're, they're not safe, they're suffering, and we are able to provide that hope, and that, those supports and resources that they need, in order to move out of that despair and that crisis. And so, we are thankful that we're able to do that, but we're also thankful that people like you, and other funders, and just the city and the community supports the work that we do. So, just to conclude, we, as you know, we exist to respond to domestic violence, which is really a community issue. And we cannot do the work without everyone's support, whether that's financial or other support. So, I know that you believe in our work, and you've been incredibly supportive over the years, and we appreciate that very much. And we appreciate being able to give you a little update here today. So, I'd answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions? Commissioner Barth?
Incredibly supportive might be an overstatement, but we do support you. And how often do you have drugs and alcohol involved in these crises, both as a, for, say, a victim, as well as for perpetrator? Is that a common thing?
It's very common, both perpetrator and victim. Obviously, we know that when people are using substances, they're less inhibited, you know, making poor choices, things like that. So, you do see violence, of course, when there are drugs or alcohol involved. Also, one of the things that sometimes people don't realize about domestic violence is that perpetrators often force the victim to use, and that's a way of controlling them. And so, sometimes our victims are utilizing these substances, but not necessarily by their choice. And so, we definitely see it a great deal.
Do you guys have an endowment that can help towards continued funding?
Yes. And I don't know if Michelle wants to answer any of the endowment questions. She's better at those than I am. But yes, we do have an endowment through Children's Home Society, as well as a small endowment specific to Children's Inn.
Ma'am Chair, I would just comment that just this year, we were, the Senate and PIR killed a bill which would allow us to have a hospitality tax, which could give us some additional funding. Our only other choice is to raise property tax, and it's really unfortunate that the people in PIR won't let us. And it would have required a vote of the citizens to put that tax in. We would not have been able to impose it, but those in PIR decided they knew better. Anyway, there's a lot of things that need to happen to take care of all of us, and I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega?
Amy, excuse me. In the five-year history that you showed us about crisis intervention, you kind of had a pattern for four years that was going down, and then in 2019, you took a significant jump. Can you kind of give us some detail about that, or do you really know why?
I don't really know why. I, when, as the year was going, we thought, boy, this, there's a lot of crisis situation. We're dealing with a lot more crisis calls monthly, and, but when I saw it at the end of the year, I was surprised that there was such a huge jump. So, I don't know what to attribute that to. It, you know, we can always hope that that means more people are reaching out. That's certainly how we like to look at it, is that maybe there isn't more people necessarily suffering from domestic violence, but more people that are reaching out for help, that maybe weren't in the past. But I wish I knew exactly why that happened.
Well, we're glad you were there.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I think my only question would be, is, we spend a lot of time thinking about, you know, our criminal justice system, and how to have early interventions, so that we keep folks out of that system. And I'm just curious what kind of work is being done to address some of the issues that then lead people to utilize your services. We're really thankful that you're there for them in their time of need. But is there more that we could be doing on the front end, to try to address some issues that...
That's a great question. You know, I think getting into the schools is important, and we do some of that. We are able to get into all the middle schools and do some education about healthy relationships. The drug and alcohol issue, the more we can address that, I think you will see, we could see improvement in other crimes and other social issues, if we could address some of that drug and alcohol issue, which I know everyone's certainly working on that. You know, parenting skills is another piece of it, and thankfully, we do have a parenting program within Children's Inn, but there's other resources for that as well. I really do think it just comes down to education, parenting, and some of those other bigger issues, like the drugs and alcohol piece.
Yeah. Like a lot of issues that we try to deal with, they're all really complicated, and no one-size-fits-all solution. But we do really appreciate the work that you guys do, and thank you for being here with us this morning.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item 12, which is to consider a motion to approve a consume-and-blend alcohol beverage license for an event on February 29th, 2020, at the Isaac Walton League. Olivia?
Thank you. Bryce Rankin has submitted an application for a consume-and-blend alcoholic beverage license. He would like to provide alcohol during his wedding and the reception on February 29th, 2020. It would start at 3:00 PM, and then technically go into the next day, ending at 12:30 AM. It has been reviewed by Planning and Zoning State's Attorney and the Sheriff's Office, and I've not received any concerns or objections.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to consider a motion to approve and authorize a chairperson to sign purchase agreement for a land parcel to acquire right-of-way for reconstruction of Highway 149. DJ?
Oh.
He's coming. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good morning.
First road signs, and now this.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. We have another approval for right-of-way purchase on County Highway 149, which is going to be our next major reconstruction project. This is just for one parcel. We have 44 parcels out there in total, from the beginning to the end of this project. Thirty of them have been completed as of this one here, so we're gonna have 14 left. This one is for purchase of .526 acres from Barbara Madison, and requesting your approval today for completing that right-of-way purchase agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Takes us to item 14, which is to authorize the chair to sign the 2020 decedent transport agreement between Minnehaha County and MedStar Paramedic Ambulance. Carol, good morning.
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Every so often, you get this contract in front of you, and this is the time for that to happen again. Before you today is a request to authorize the chairperson to sign a contract with MedStar Paramedic Ambulance for decedent transport. Most of these are within the city of Sioux Falls, is to where this happens, and that occurs when a body needs to be transported to the coroner. That is something that the county does. It's part of the coroner's budget. So, with that, we would request authorization for, to sign this contract. MedStar currently has the contract, and to continue that.
Any questions?
Motion to approve with a comment.
Motion with Commissioner Heiburger?
Just to prove that, or just to appreciate that MedStar would do the service for us, because it's, it's, it's not what a normal ambulance would do, and we really appreciate the service, so.
Any other comments, questions? I'd add a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is our legislative update. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Legislative session is now defined in terms of the universe of bills. At the end of last week, on Thursday, the final bills had to be submitted, and there were a few interesting late additions last week. Most notably was Senate Bill 157, and that bill was actually brought forward by the governor. And I would like to clarify, due to the late arrival of this bill, as far as when the legislative update was drafted, Senate Bill 157 was not included on your update, but I think that is probably the most pertinent bill, as far as impacting counties, as far as zoning decisions are concerned. And while the bill would not necessarily impact Minnehaha County much, there might be a few turnaround times or notice periods that need to be altered in county ordinance. If Senate Bill 157 passes, it would have the potential to affect zoning decisions significantly in other counties as well. Currently, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners is continuing to look at the bill, and no committee hearing has been scheduled yet. I'll certainly keep you all apprised of what the association's discussion on that bill is. And just going through, looking at these other bills here, the other bill of note that I'd like to bring up is House Bill 1099. That would authorize counties to impose a temporary sales and use tax, to issue revenue bonds to fund county infrastructure, specifically public safety facilities, as well as courthouses. And that bill made it out of the Senate Local Government Committee in an eight-to-five vote. It will have a full House floor discussion today. Because of the nature of the bill, the Speaker of the House determined that it would require a two-thirds majority to pass. So, that is a steep hill to climb, certainly, especially because to enact that, citizens would have to vote to authorize that tax in their own county, not the legislature. It's merely granting authority. That being said, I would be happy to answer any other questions here. And because we have a special guest, Ken Tunison, if he has any update on the state veterans cemetery, that bill, to receive some additional federal funds, I believe just had a hearing recently.
Yes, good morning again, Ken Tunison. The initial request for a grant was for 5.9 million for the cemetery, the 12.9 acres on the first stage. That has been increased to 6.9 million, and it was approved yesterday to seek the grant, additional grant from the National Cemetery Administration for them funds to build that first segment. The endowment fund is at $635,077.25, and that's in the envelope that we handed, I handed out this morning, is what it, we've sent out roughly 3,000 letters to members of the Chamber of Commerce from Brookings, to Smith, Watertown, Sioux Falls. So, there's a mailing going out currently, asking for donations for the cemetery endowment fund. Any questions?
I hope the grant gets, gets through, and...
Well, it will. It's already been approved by national. It's just had to go through the formality at the state.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Well, good. Thank you for the update.
And still looking at late this year, or early next year, for completion of the first stage of the 13 stages.
That's exciting.
So, if you're not, if you're not aware of it, it's going to be built in 13 stages of the first stage next year. And then every 10 years, it'll add another expansion. So, over the next 130 years, it will take to build it and fill it. And once it's full, there'll be 28,519 veterans, spouses, any dependent children, or spousering and leagued children can all be laid to rest there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, great example of planning for the future, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
I misstated some of the aspects of Senate Bill 68, and I wonder, Craig, if you would explain that further. Not that it needs to be explained, because it was killed by Senator Stelzer and Senator Otten, our own senators, but maybe you'd explain what I misspoke on.
Senate Bill 68 was supported by Minnehaha County, as well as the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, amongst a number of other organizations. And what that bill would do is a mere statutory authority that already exists for municipalities, in terms of being able to enact a local option entertainment tax. Some people may call it a hospitality tax. Other people may call it a local option bed board or booze tax. The dollars raised from that revenue would have to be spent on public safety or ambulance services, due to the cost drivers that public safety is and are on different county budgets. To be able to implement that, it would have, the bill would have granted statutory authority to county commissions to own that vote to enact it. So, the legislature would merely be granting counties, the local authority, to implement that tax. And certainly, if residents of any county choosing to implement that tax would disagree with the decision of the county commission, they could go through the referral process, as authorized by state law.
Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Craig. And I just want to comment on Senate Bill 157, who, which I've had a number of contacts on. A commissioner from Yankton County, Clemish, called me about it. And I've talked to Pete Sonstegard, who has egg-laying operations in the area, including, I think he was the guy that proposed 7 million chickens in Turner County. I've also talked to Steve Dick with Egg United, and Paul Cosboth, who used to be on our planning commission, and is now working on developing CAFOs all across the eastern part of the state. In any case, there are some things that are not necessarily clear. Pete Sonstegard says that the 17-day period of before you can, you must resolve an appeal is not intended for our planning commission to jump through a hoop. It's just that, the way Pete explained it, it needs to be acted on as far as accepting a, a appeal. And he said that he's got one in Yankton County, or in Turner County, sorry, that went to Circuit Court last June, and he's still not heard back from the court. And this, of course, is not easy to do business with, when things get held up for, for years by advocates on one side or the other. Anyway, it's, I think there are some things to be concerned about. I think we all know that we have the best planning and zoning in the state of South Dakota here, in Minnehaha County. And I just don't want to have something slip under the radar. We, we have special permits that can go through without a hearing, and it's things like cemeteries, animal units under 250, so basically smaller units. You worry that the state would make it, 5,000 animal units would be a special permitted thing without any hearings, et cetera. Anyway, I'm just babbling a little bit here, but it's, it's got my attention.
Commissioner Heiburger?
So, I'm talking about Senate Bill 1, or House Bill 157 also. So, this past week, several people from our staff here got together, it was about four, five of us, and went through the bill, line by line, and pulled out the things that would maybe be, maybe be a concern to us. So, and now I have talked to the South Dakota State Association of County Commissioners, and one of our lobbyists up there. Our association director did sit on the group that worked on this bill with the president, or with the, with the governor. And so, they will be bringing our comments back to them. I did get some explanations on some of the concerns that you had, Commissioner Barth. And we will be talking again today, and then having that conversation with Yankton County with some of their concerns. I think all the concerns that you have voiced, or ones that we found in our group of five, I have brought back to the association, who is bringing it back to the group that's been working on this bill. And most of the problems that we recognized were times. Like, like Craig said, we have asked for a few more days, or an extra week here or there, and just brought those forward already. So, those will be discussed. They could possibly be amendments, the special, special whatever you called it. That is also, I think it's misinterpreted, and we said there needs to be a better explanation, because we do have a category for that, and it's for each county to make their own special categories. And basically, that bill mirrors what we're doing in Minnehaha County already. So, we're, we're on it.
Have the best planning.
We're on it, and the association has not gone forward as, as the Board of Directors and voted yet that they will be supportive of this. And so, that conversation, I hope, is happening on Wednesday. So, stay tuned, and I'll let you know when I find out about it.
Not only do we have the best planning, we also have... Not only do we have the best planning, we also have the best president of the State Association of County Commissioners.
I thought you were going to say we have the best commissioner representative on our planning.
No, that's for you to say.
I just did, so. Okay. Any other legislation anybody wants to visit about? I just, I mean, I did get an email from the sheriff this morning about Senate Bill 46, that that passed out a committee this morning, which is another bill that would affect counties. It's a bill on competency restoration options. As you know, we've talked a number of times over the years about the issues with HSC and the waits that folks have had with having to sit in jail because there's no open bed for them down at HSC. And so they end up being in our jail, not getting any of the services that they really need to get their competency restored. So while it's not a perfect solution, there is a bill right now that would allow them to have some competency restoration that might occur in the jail that the state would pay for. And while we would prefer to have them down at HSC, this is an option that our sheriff has worked closely with the governor's office and the Sheriff's Association to try to craft an option that would not have people just sit in jail for six months without getting any services. And so that did come out of committee this morning, I understand, on a six-to-one vote. So we'll, we'll be following that as well.
Yes, and that bill is on the legislative update here. Thank you for the update, Madam Chair.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much, Craig. Okay, so that takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Heiburger?
Have one from the library. Staff from the homeless outreach department at Southeast Behavioral Health now has an office hours at the downtown library on Thursdays from ten to noon. And it gives an opportunity to offer mental health or social work assistance to library customers. And they'll have a little placard outside their room where people can stop in. So just a shout out to the library for being proactive.
Anything else, any other liaison reports? I would note that I met with DJ Boothie in the highway department this morning, and got an update from him last week. It's, it is really quite astonishing to me, being, kind of getting more firsthand contact with him and learning much more and much more detail about what's going on at the highway department, all the different, all the work that they're doing out there. And I'd just like to give a shout out to the crew that was out on Sunday morning at six o'clock, cleaning the snow off our roads and, you know, dealing with the wind that was still drifting it over. But I really do appreciate those folks that are out there so that we can get to church and the other places that we want to go to in the morning and stay safe, so.
Madam Chair, I think we may have the best county highway department in the state, and they have the best liaison.
I would agree. We have the best of everything, for sure. Anything else? All right. New business? Is there any new business today? Any old business? Commissioner Barth?
You know, this is actually reflecting back on our Children's Inn report. I, I know a person in law enforcement that works with drug interdiction. And he says that not only are they finding more meth, but the purity is greatly increased. It's in the high nineties percent pure. And that the price of the product has gone down, which means there's a lot of it. And that's really a serious warning for all of us. We need to do something.
Yeah, that's one of the issues that the police commissioner talked about yesterday. It's just the issue with meth, and it continues to be a challenge. And when you have a large, low-cost supply, that doesn't help the issue at all, so. All right. If there's not any other old business, I'd consider a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.